Called to order this special workshop meeting at 4:30, 1:00 PM. That's City Council and all council members are present. Item two is remarks of visitors. We have Julie Peters.
So, I am Julie Peters, 2410 Mulligan Lane, Navasota, Texas. And back in the late 1900s, 1999, I worked at the Navasota Public Library. And I was also a docent and on the board of the Horlock House while I worked at the library. I knew Roy McHorlock and of course, he was very passionate about his family's legacy. I did enjoy giving tours there. I did think it was a very good resource. They used to have field trips there. They used to give tours to children at school for that. I think, I know this is like a big money pit and it has been since the day it got handed over, but I think it would be a good resource and it would be worth investing in. And there's a lot you can do, I think. But I just think, you know, try to do what you can to make it work, turn it around. Yeah, just want to say I enjoyed it. I thought it was a good resource. I think it's a good link to Navasota's history. So, and that's a big part of what Navasota is about. So, just wanted to say that.
Okay. Thank you. Lucy Avera.
Good afternoon, Council and Mayor. My name is Lucy Avera. I am the Director for the Grimes County Chamber of Commerce and also Economic Services Director for the Grimes County as a whole. Sorry, throat thing's been a thing all day. Horlock House is a very interesting topic with lots of different people, lots of different feelings and opinions concerning it. The only thing I would ask Council to consider is the viability of a good programming, program operating in Horlock House versus the expenses the city is currently maintaining to operate it, to maintain it, to keep Horlock House open. The Chamber would never ask a local government or a city council to do something that is not viable to the community, is not useful, and doesn't do things that will work within the city's constraints of their budget. We're all broke. We all feel it. We know it. One of the things that the Chamber has discussed is a board. So, we have a very diverse board. We've got 15 members and then an additional five that are ex officios and an additional 20 that are ambassadors. We've asked all of them, what do they feel about, how do they feel about the Horlock House? What do they like about it? What do they dislike? What do they want to see come about at the Horlock House? Every one of our board members has said the same thing. They don't want to see it wasted, but they don't want to see dollars wasted for something that's not useful for the community. So, it's been no secret that the Chamber has been involved in the discussions and that we're interested in what the Horlock House could become, whether that directly involves the Chamber or it involves other entities like nonprofits, like the Historical Commission or Two Rivers. The only thing that we ask is that you consider a program and an institution or an organization that is viable to the community and that operates on a consistent basis, Monday through Friday, or even if it's a Wednesday through Saturday, Sunday, something that's open to the public on a consistent basis that will actually be useful and not something that's going to be closed on a regular basis. Okay? Thank you guys very much.
All right. Moved to item number three, which is a workshop to discuss the Horlock House Art Gallery and History Museum. A little background, at the November 27, 23 council workshop, staff presented to council repairs needed to be made at the Horlock House and identified a plan for repairing exterior painting, installing a new roof, repairing HVAC. Annually, it's budgeted about $21,000 for maintaining and operating the Horlock House. At the conclusion of that workshop, recommended to city manager to provide cost estimates for needed repair and rehab work to both exterior and interior of the Horlock House. We contacted Phoenix One Restoration and Construction to obtain cost estimates and consulting fees and full construction costs for repairs, rehab, and restoration work needed to address the concerns of the Horlock House. The estimated costs for the consulting fees, architecture, engineering, geotechnical report, property survey, hazardous survey, and ADA review were estimated to be $216,557. Estimated cost for the rehab construction for the Horlock House restoration was estimated at $1.5 million and some change. An itemized cost estimate is attached that we have here, considering the current maintenance and repair, along with the termination of the Artist in Residence Program. It's being recommended that we have this workshop tonight. Representatives, I believe from Phoenix One, members of Navasota, Grimes County Chamber of Commerce, and representatives from Two Rivers Heritage Foundation have been invited to come tonight just to hear the council's discussion during this workshop. And I want to thank, especially, I want to thank Two Rivers Heritage Foundation for putting out a survey to their members and to the community for, and then sharing those results of that survey with our staff and council, which all of our council has had time to look all that over. And so, this is a workshop to discuss the options and give staff some direction on kind of where we want to go. And no action will be taken tonight. So...
Mayor, Mayor's Council, from that last meeting that the mayor just spoke about, one of the things that was discussed was several of you asked me to reach out to Grimes County Historical Commission. So, did, reached out to their president and they, they had a board discussion and they politely said they were not interested in taking over the Horlock House, taking on some other discussions. As Mr. Bard just mentioned, we reached out to the Chamber. The Chamber could be interested in that as being a current, a new home for them, for the Chamber location. However, there would need to be issues revolving around repairs as well as the parking issues. So, those are some things that we need to have discussions. At the meeting, we talked about the buckets of money that we have to be able to utilize these. We, we are allowed to use hotel motel funds from when visitors come to stay here in the city of Navasota. At the hotels, they, there's a hotel occupancy tax that those hotelers will charge. However, the state has specific guidelines of what we can use those funds for. One of the things that we've been utilizing those funds for is for the arts. So, 15% of our annual revenue that we receive from hot tax, which is about 20, a little over $20,000, can be used for the arts. One-seventh of the amount that we receive can be used for advertising purposes. So, council, over the years, have utilized those two buckets of funds, put them together, and they have provided the Navasota Artist in Residence Program as well as provided through the Arts Council, grants to nonprofits. In the past, Navasota Theater Alliance, Washington on the Brazos, and most recently, the last couple of years, has been the Chamber of Commerce for their Groovy Grapes event, has been receiving some funds for that. The total amount of that, of those funds is around $40,500. Additionally, we can use those funds for historic preservation. And that's where the last couple of years, we budgeted for some funds. Last year, it was around $50,000 for a new roof and $20,000 for painting. This year in the budget, we budgeted around $10,000 for HVAC and some upkeep in appliances around $5,000. In addition to that, you can use the money for wayfinding. And so, we've utilized that for some of the wayfinding projects. This year, we'll be hopefully finalizing wayfinding for a little bit. Those signs are about ready to be printed and we'll start going out along the highways and 105 east-west, as well as Business 6 and on Highway 6 frontage roads. So, with that, we want to also remind council, part of your strategic plan and part of things that you've discussed over the last couple of years is the desire for the city to become a Main Street city. And so, the state has now finalized what that's going to look like on the application process. And so, we have a meeting, actually, I think it's next week, with our consultant that's going to help us on that application process. The funds out of the hot fund can be, it would be utilized to fund the Main Street program. And so, staff did all the council asked to do. We tried to find different sources of funding for this, as well as we reached out, knowing that the fan throw up is being redone. Our Assistant City Manager reached out to the Phoenix One Restoration and Construction Company. My understanding is I think they're the ones that are working on that. They have provided in your packet, a detailed summary of what those costs would look like. They went out and did an assessment and they divided into divisions. And so, tonight on Zoom here, we have a representative from them that I've asked them to, a public works director has asked them to kind of highlight some of this, to kind of give you a little bit more understanding of their process, what, what it looks like, that the needs are. If you remember, there's some lead paint on it. There's been, I don't know how many times, the building's been painted over and so much that it's been painted that it just, it flakes off now because there's just so much paint on it. But I'm going to turn it over to a public works director and the person, I guess it's Kyle that's on Zoom here. And Kyle, I'm going to let you speak to council and to our public here, introduce yourself and then also just kind of jump right into how you want to present this to council, please.
Okay. Thank you very much. Can everybody hear me?
We can.
Okay. Sorry, my Zoom's not working very good here, so I apologize for that. It's a little echoey in my ear, but I will kind of just briefly talk about the project a bit. We, we did visit the site. We made some visual inspections of foundation and finishes, roof, those sorts of things. What I have spoken to public works about numerous times is that we, you know, we're a contractor, so this is really just based off our experience on past projects. We've done, you know, hundreds of historic homes over the years. I've been in this business for 20 years, so we have a lot of experience with buildings like this. But the cost that you're looking at is really just based off of years of experience working on these types of homes, what we would generally expect to find. To really get deeper into this process and to get a more accurate assessment of cost, you would really need to expend the, the kind of upfront dollars to hire a design team, an architect, an engineer. The architect could come and do inspections and give you guys a detailed scope of work, do drawings that could be submitted to the THC for approval. The structural engineer could do examination of the foundation and really give a good structural design of what the foundation repairs are going to be required. You know, and then obviously, they would need MEP engineers to design your MEP systems, your mechanical system, your electrical upgrades. All of those components really require a design team to, to give an absolutely accurate assessment of cost. But as I mentioned before, we've done a lot of this type of work, so this estimate that you see is really just based on our experience, what do we typically expect to find when we restore an old house like this? And, you know, as far as like, say, the MEP work, that's obviously a big component of it. We're just making assumptions based on other projects we've done. What would typically be the tonnage of HVAC that would be required on a house like this? What kind of electrical service would we need? Well, what did we do on this house? You know, that's just, it's stuff like that. But we think this is a pretty good picture. It's, it's not a detailed assessment of scope, but I think it gives you guys a good idea of what the dollar, what the investment is going to be to actually do a good restoration project of this house. And if you'll notice, we did kind of break it out by division, which is just a typical format for us when we do budget estimates. But in the notes section to the right, we've given everybody kind of a narrative of what each division entails. So, we kind of gave you those costs, those scope costs, and then our typical contractor, overhead and profit, and obviously the bonds and insurance and kind of just the standard construction markups are at the bottom. And then, at the very bottom, you'll see the estimated consulting costs. That's really me talking to some architects and engineers that we work with on a regular basis and asking them what would be the anticipated fees to do a project like this. And so, we think that's a pretty accurate assessment of what you could expect for those costs. We generally think that probably 75% of that estimated consulting cost would be upfront cost. You have what's known as CA or Construction Administration that design teams bill CA fees for kind of managing the construction process. So, that kind of happens as the construction's happening. So, that would generally be about 25% of that cost. But 75% of that cost is really the detailed assessment, investigation, and development of the drawings, so the design portion. So, if you guys wanted to kind of commit that upfront cost and say, okay, hired an architect, an engineer, really get that deep into it, it would, it would take about, about 75% of that estimated consulting cost to get you guys a good set of drawings and specifications and a detailed scope of work. So, I mean, that's really what I have to say about it, unless anybody has any particular questions about the estimate.
I'd like him to, if you could, just very briefly, because everyone in here doesn't see these numbers that we're looking at, so if you could just briefly say what, what the divisions are, just in the dollar amounts.
Okay, sure. Yeah, so I'll start at the top. Division one is general conditions. That's our project management, site supervision. Basically, that's an experienced superintendent to be on the job site every day. So, the biggest part of that cost is labor, but it also includes, you know, construction, fencing, dumpsters, portable toilets, all the things that you need to run a construction project. So, that's the first cost. It's $139,400. And then, division two is demolition, site work. A large part of that on this particular project would be grading and utilities, getting new utilities into the building, grading the site, make sure you got good positive drainage away from the house, and then landscaping and, you know, just general site work. And we've estimated that to be $61,800. Again, you know, as I spoke to a minute ago, that's really just based on other projects that we've done that are similar to this. You guys would obviously have some amount of control over these costs in the long run as to, well, you know, we don't want a lot of landscaping. We just want to lay a little sod around the house. Or, you know, you could obviously go minimal there. You could go extreme with your landscaping, right? So, that's, that's obviously something that you guys would have some control over in the long run and that, that would be worked out through the process of hiring an architect and working through the scope. But I think this is a good kind of just median estimate. Item number three, or division number three, is structural work. It's, it's really concrete and structural work. So, on this project, that really entails the foundation. There's definitely some foundation issues at this house. It's pretty visible, just doing a visual inspection. So, there definitely will need to be foundation work that will likely entail jacking up the house, lifting it off of the existing foundation, stabilizing and repairing the existing foundation, likely adding piers, whether it's helical piers or concrete piers, and stabilizing the existing foundation and then setting the house back down onto that new foundation. So, we have included a budget of $106,000, or 106,200 for the structural foundation work. Division four is masonry. Masonry on this project would really be limited to the existing, it's kind of related to the foundation work I just spoke about, but there are existing piers under the house that are built out of brick and they're in pretty bad condition. They need a lot of repair work. So, the masonry would involve repairing the foundations and that's an estimate of $27,700. Division five is metals. We don't see any metal work required on this project, so we have $0 for division five. Division six is carpentry and millwork. There's a lot of wood elements on this house, obviously. It's a mostly wood constructed house, so a lot of woodwork required. That would be framing repairs, whether it be floor framing, roof framing, walls, and then obviously the more, that's what we call rough carpentry. And then you have the more finished carpentry elements, which would be siding and trim and soffits. So, a lot of work required. There's a lot of bad, there's a lot of wood in bad condition, a lot of rot. So, you know, we would see replacing a lot of the siding and a lot of the trim elements. So, that cost is $112,400. Division seven is roofing. Obviously, the house is going to need a new roof, new flashings, new sealants. Also in division seven would be insulation, so obviously, we'd have to add some insulation on the walls and at the roof level, I'm sure. So, we've got an estimated budget of $47,600. Division eight is doors, windows, and hardware. This is an area of historic projects that is always very costly when you have a historic home or a historic building in general. THC is going to require historically accurate windows, historically accurate doors, and historically accurate hardware. And that's always a very expensive process to recreate exact replicas of the historic windows. The windows are in bad shape. They're going to have to be rebuilt. The doors are in bad shape. They're going to have to be rebuilt. I think we can reuse some of the hardware, but there will be, you know, an allowance to purchase new hardware to meet ADA requirements in certain areas. You'll need lever sets instead of knobs, things like that. So, that's going to be a very costly area of the project and we've got a budget of Division nine is finishes. That's your just typical interior finishes, drywall, flooring, paint. You know, that's pretty self-explanatory, so we've got an allowance of $97,100 for your interior finishes. And when I say interior finishes, it also includes paint on the exterior as well. Division 10 specialties, that's where you would typically see things like window coverings, you know, blinds or shades and toilet accessories. If you had larger bathrooms, you'd see toilet partitions, but in this case, we've just, we've got a small allowance of $4,600 to purchase some toilet accessories, you know, your toilet paper holder, your mirrors, things like that. And then, interior signage and exterior signage. Division 11 is equipment. We don't see any need for any of that work in this project, so that's $0. Division 12 is furnishings. Okay, we're carrying window treatments here in division 12. So, this is where our window treatments are. So, this is really just, again, kind of an allowance for what we would typically expect to see, whether you chose to use blinds or pull down shades or something, but this is just a small allowance to cover window coverings. And so, that's $13,700. Division 13 is special construction. That can include a lot of things, but in this particular project, it would be asbestos or lead paint remediation. We've included an allowance of $20,000 because we would anticipate finding lead paint. We would anticipate, we would expect to find asbestos in the window glazing and the window sealants and possibly in a few mastics around ductwork and some roof mastics and things like that. But we would also expect to find lead paint. The good thing is, you know, when we, when we give you an allowance of $20,000, most of that cost would be anticipating asbestos abatement. For lead paint, there's a small upcharge to deal with lead paint, but in general, if we're removing the paint, on a historic project like this, we're going to typically remove all of the paint, get back to fresh wood. So, the cost to remove the paint, the labor involved in that is the majority of the cost. If it's lead or not lead, we still have to remove it, right? So, it's really just a small upcharge because there's a little more disposal cost if it's lead. So, that's a palatable allowance of $20,000. Division 14 is conveying systems. That would be elevators or escalators, but obviously, nothing involved in this project. Division 21 is fire suppression. That's something, that would be just fire sprinkler. We would assume no fire sprinkler required in this type of building. Generally, when we do these projects, they do not require fire sprinkler. So, we've allowed $0 for that division, but that would be something we would ultimately need to work with a fire marshal on and verify because it can be different in what, in any location. So, so it's real, real location dependent. So, that would need to be worked through, but we would expect to not have to install a fire sprinkler system in this building. Division 22 is plumbing. This is, you know, new wet streams, plumbing fixtures, pipes, you know, a sink in the kitchen area and all the associated piping. That's an allowance of $52,100. Division 23 is HVAC, all new heating and air, includes, you know, the equipment and the ductwork, and that's $79,900. Division 26 is electrical. That would be installing new service for the building and running all new power, receptacles, lighting, everything associated with that. We would anticipate some amount of exterior lighting and that's an allowance of $67,300. Division 27 is communications and security. That's really, you know, really just kind of a guess based on what kind of requirements you guys have and who's going to ultimately occupy the building, but we're assuming some amount of security requirement and that you, there would be some need for data outlets for IT support. So, we've allowed $16,000 for that. Division 28 is fire alarm. We, we said we would not expect to install fire sprinkler, but we would expect a fire alarm to be required, so we've allowed for a new fire alarm system and that's $22,000. Division 33 is utilities. That would be water supply, sanitary sewer, all new utilities to the building. It's possible that that amount of money could be saved if the existing utilities are adequate and in good condition, but obviously, we haven't done that investigation and I would expect that that to not be the case. I mean, that would, that would be rare to find adequate utilities and utilities that are in good enough condition to reuse. So, we've allowed $28,700 to run new utilities. And then, on top of the, the standard divisions, we've also allowed, we have a couple of small allowances. One was for new fencing. That was assuming that at the end of the project, the owner would want a new permanent fence, something nice around the property line. So, we've allowed $20,000 for that. And then, we just kind of threw some money in there as an accessibility allowance. It would be our assumption, based on the end user, that this building would need to meet ADA and we would need to install some sort of ramp up to the front door and there would need to be some sort of adjustments to the front porch. Like I said a minute ago, we, there's hardware, particular types of hardware required to meet ADA. So, that's really, you know, for lack of a better term, a guesstimate of what would be required to bring the building up to ADA standards. So, that's $34,000. That all totals up to $1,175,300. We have a couple of standard markups on top of that that are, are contractor's contingency that would really, our contractor's contingency is generally what we put on an estimate to handle anything that we mess up in the estimating process. You know, if I tell you that the electrical is going to cost $20,000 and ultimately it costs $25,000, the $5,000 comes out of our contractor's contingency. So, that's, that's what that's there for. I'm sorry, can you guys still hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry. I've seen some text messages. I've seen some text messages about another Zoom link here, so I was just making sure I wasn't kicked off.
Not yet.
Uh, okay, um, okay, almost done, sorry. Uh, the, the next item was Contractors' overhead and profit. That's just our overhead and profit markup. That's a very standard markup for a general contractor. Uh, Bonds and Insurance, just our, you know, general liability insurance is required of a general contractor and, uh, a Payment Performance Bond that's almost always required on a project of this size. Uh, and then, we have a ten percent owner's contingency. That would be a contingency that's for the owner to use, and that would be for, if you wanted to add scope later, you know, we've already signed up the project and you say, "Well, I, you know, I didn't think about this before, but I'd like to add, um, you know, some trees in the front yard," whatever it may be. Uh, that, that would be for the owner's use to add scope to the project. Um, so, that all, when it's all said and done, the construction cost totals one million five hundred twenty seven thousand three hundred and sixty eight dollars and seventy five cents. And then, there are, as I mentioned before, the estimated consulting costs that I'll just really quickly run through. The architect and engineering fees is thirteen percent, which is one hundred ninety eight thousand five hundred fifty seven and ninety four cents. There's a geotechnical report that would be required for the foundation work, that's forty six hundred dollars. A property survey, thirty eight hundred dollars. Hazardous material survey, which is required by law, would be six thousand four hundred dollars. And then, an ADA review, this would be, uh, a task reviewer to review all the ADA requirements, and that's thirty two hundred dollars. So, the grand total is one million seven hundred forty three thousand nine hundred twenty six and sixty nine cents. And we have put a note, this kind of note at the bottom is important for everybody to see that, uh, that the budget is based on current construction costs. And if the project is delayed several years into the future, that you should anticipate ten percent inflation cost per year for increases in construction costs.
Thank you, Kyle, appreciate it. Thank you for going over that.
And that doesn't, that doesn't even address if there were to be parking.
Yeah, so that, that is not including any, that is just what's out there now. Uh, so, parking lot was not part of it, was not part of the discussion. I can't remember how much we have estimated that several years ago, but that, that's not even part of this discussion.
Kyle, I have a question for you. What do we end up with?
What do you end up with if we do the project?
Right.
Uh, you end up with a beautiful old house. It's a beautiful historic home that's in pretty bad shape currently. It would take a lot of work, but if this project was done and this kind of money was invested into it, it would be a beautiful home, uh, a beautiful building that, um, you guys could use for whatever you think it needs to be used for. But, you know, the, the use of the building is really up to you. Uh, all I can really speak to is that it would be a very nice, beautiful old building when the project is complete.
But it's graded out historically, I mean, this qualify for a, a historical sign or, or something, uh?
It already has been.
Oh, yes. I think it's currently, it is definitely currently a registered historic landmark. Um, it would be eligible for, you know, grant money, THC tax credits. Uh, there, there's, there's a lot of opportunity to, um, uh, you know, recoup some of the cost of the project based on its historic standard, but it's, um, you know, it, it certainly is a registered historic landmark.
Hey, Kyle, I'm gonna ask that, uh, we jump off of this Zoom and join the other one, uh, just so we don't get kicked out. Thank you.
Sure.
Hey, Kyle, can you hear us now?
Okay, I can, I'm back.
All right, we can hear you.
Right.
Counselor, y'all have any other questions for Kyle?
Yeah, um, so, I, I don't understa, I mean, I, the scope that we asked him to do was to describe to us all of the things that would get the home back or the, the building back to a condition of mostly like new. Um, and so, i- is there a list of things that we could do that would allow us to use, to continue to use it without having to go through every division today? Um, that we could say Division Two and Division Seven and Fourteen need to be addressed, you know, within the next year, but the other divisions could, could be done at a later time?
Kyle, what?
Yeah, I think, um, there's certainly some of that that is possible. I think that, um, you know, as far as how much of this will be required in order to be able to occupy the building, I think you're gonna find that it's gonna be a whole lot of it. Uh, I mean, when you just start to go down the list, you're talking, the foundation's in really bad condition, so obviously, you're gonna have to do the foundation work. Uh, that's gonna be a big cost. Um, your MEP is gonna absolutely be required, you're gonna have to have air conditioning and electrical. So, um, you know, it's really gonna get down to finishes and things like that, you know, that, could you live with the current state of the interior finishes, the flooring, the thing, you know, aesthetic things like that? Um, as far as getting much more detailed about that kind of scope breakdown, um, what we were asked to help with is to give you guys a picture of what you could expect cost-wise, what would be the ultimate cost to restore this building, you know? Like I said before, it's really just a guesstimate based off of experience. But, uh, in terms of getting that detailed about scope and what are our possibilities, what, uh, what are our options, that's the kind of thing that you guys would need to bring an architect onboard for and really get deep into, um, you know, design requirements and scope possibilities. But, you know, you could certainly, uh, structure the project such that you had different tiers, and it could be a, what's absolutely required to occupy the building, and then what would be a luxury, uh, you could kind of break out costs that way. I, um, you know, I mean, that's something, we could certainly look at the estimate and send you guys, uh, a revised estimate that was, that just kind of pulls out some of the more luxury items and really is just the bare necessities, and where does that shake out? That's pretty easy for me to do, and it, but again, it's just an opinion.
And it would probably be, you know, a minimum of the, the consulting cost would have to be, that would be your first step, right?
Yes, but like, like I said before, about seventy five percent of the consulting cost would be your first step. About twenty five percent of that consulting cost happens after construct, after construction has started. So, if you wanted to get a good detailed set of drawings and have an architect onboard to have meetings with and discuss scope possibilities, you know, an architect could do his drawings a couple of different ways. It could be a, you know, package one is everything we want, package two is just the bare necessities. Uh, so, architect can help you with all that, but his design cost to get to that stage where you've got your drawings and your specifications is gonna be about seventy five percent of that consulting cost. And then, like I said, once you get those drawings, you can go out to contractors, have us bid those drawings, and then if you decide to move forward with the project, then that's when you would pay the consultants. The other twenty five percent of that fee is for them to do their construction administration.
And I'm sorry, I, I didn't understand, I don't think, that... As of right now, you're saying that we're, that the, the city or whoever may use that building is not able to use it? That you said in order for it to be able to be occupied?
Yeah, I mean, I, um, that's, you know, that, I guess that's up to you guys. If you're able to occupy it in its current condition, um, that would be, um, a thought you guys would need to make. I wouldn't recommend occupying the building in its current condition. It's got foundation issues, it's in pretty bad shape. Uh, but, you know, that's, um, that's certainly something that you guys can decide. I think if you wanted to repair the building and get it to, uh, a much more stable condition, then that's where this cost comes into play.
Okay, and then I have another question. That there are several divisions that are missing, and I just realized this when you read through them. Are, are those, just curious why they were left out, Division Fifteen to Twenty and Twenty Four and Twenty Five? I don't know that it...
Uh, yeah, just because they don't exist or they, you know, they're just, um, not commonly used construction divisions and why the divisions are numbered this way, uh, that's somebody that obviously didn't have a lot of common sense did a long time ago, and it's just what we use. Uh, but this, this is the standard list of divisions that we use in construction. And so, the ones that I didn't see necessarily on this project, I just left zeros in, uh, but this, this is all of the divisions that we typically use.
Okay.
Any more questions for Kyle? Thank you, Kyle, appreciate it. Um, myself or the Public Works Director, we'll get back with you if we can give you an update after, uh, after the meeting.
Okay, great, thank you guys, happy to help.
All right, thank you, Kyle, appreciate it.
I was wondering if you might kind of begin our discussion with a little history on how the city ended up with the whole lockout.
Uh, that's, that's not me, that's someone else that was before me.
Well...
I don't, I don't...
It was, it was, it was before anybody's time that's in this room.
Bernie might be, Bernie will know her history.
Yeah, you might, you, you might share that, Bernie, if you could.
Well, I lived in the house.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. When we moved here in nineteen seventy, uh, Roy Horlock and his family were using it as a weekend getaway type thing. They had dressed it up pretty good. Roy was very interested in, in the history in Navasota and belonged to the, uh, I believe it was called the Grimes County Historical Association, which was a five oh one three C. They were a very active group led by Georgia Best, and, uh, they published that History of Grimes County. I don't know if you've seen it, the book, it's about eBay. If you find one on eBay, the price, I understand, is a hundred and seventy five dollars now for it, so. But it was a, really a magical thing that they were able to do that. They were very active, they, uh, did a lot of things here in, in Grimes County. Roy was interested in the thing, he bought a, bought some other property over in Independence, and they decided to give up the, their weekend place here in Navasota because it wasn't quite country enough type thing. And so, he donated it to the Grimes County Historical Commis, or, no, Historical Association. And that was, I believe, nineteen eighty four, but it was sometime in the middle, middle eighties. Uh, then, as all good things come to an end, the people in the Historical Commission who had been so active, uh, got on in years and, and moved away or died or, uh, got disinterested, whatever. And finally, the Historical Association dissolved in the late nineties. Uh, they had to find someplace, now they had this property on their hands, but no organization to support it. And so, after asking around, it finally ended up with the city in Navasota. Uh, the grant that, that Roy had used to give it to the Historical Association was very specific in several things that it could or could not be used for. And those were to apply kind of in perpetuity, uh, to any entity that it got passed down to. So, the city accepted the, uh, the property with those conditions type thing. Uh, we never had a real good use for it early on. We, they operated it as a museum there for a while, and I don't know whether that was before or after, probably before, uh, it was needed to the city. But they still had the furniture in there, and they had, uh, one of the rooms upstairs was dedicated to the Horlock Companies, where there was a Horlock Bottling Company here in town. And I remember going through some of that at that time. After the city got it, we struggled with this, uh, this idea of what to do with it type thing. It wasn't practical, this is not in the city's wheelhouse, we didn't have a historian. I think Russell Kirschman, who considered himself a historian, uh, volunteered to, to kind of be the curator for it there for a while, and he brought in Robin Montgomery. Uh, they kept it open sporadically, I think, and then Russell had to move on to things that paid him. After the, uh, the property had been sitting around for a while as, as a museum, but support, we tried to support it through the library as, uh... And we had the docents, as we, we heard there from the young lady at the start of it. Ms. Peters was, was one of the docents that worked at the library, and we'd go down and open it up and, and, uh, uh, if somebody wanted to go in there. That didn't work very well, and, and so, early on, we were looking for something to do with it. And sitting here at a meeting like this, and this would have been, uh, probably around twenty ten, that the, the property was not productive. And we were looking for something, and, and the, uh, Peter Canny, who was a councilman, mentioned the, the Artist in Residence as a possibility. And it was one of those fortuitous things that, that just came up, right? We contacted the Arts Council. Chris Dyer, who was the head of the Arts Council at that point, jumped on it. He had the right connections, he did the right things, and before long, we got a real going concern. And we had three artists here at a time, and we were very successful for several years, so successful that Bryan and College Station jumped on the bandwagon and started their own Artist in Residence programs. And then, Chris left to take another job at Waco at the Dr. Pepper Museum. And, uh, his replacements were not nearly as, as avid about it as he was, not nearly as good at it as he was. And our attendance started dropping where we went from three artists to two artists to one artist to no artists. Uh, the same thing had happened up in Bryan and College Station, and... the explanation from the Arts Council was that there just wasn't any interest in an artist in residence anymore. However, other sources indicate that maybe it was just we weren't doing this job, that they were not as good at it, and not as adept at it, and were maybe pushing the wrong buttons. The artist in residence programs in Bryan and College Station have been terminated, ours has been terminated. I think that, that it might have a possibility and might, maybe the most realistic possibility of coming back as a program. One of the things that, that was wrong with it, it was supposed to be one that the artists would be essentially the, the docents. That people that came up and wanted to see the best museum could get one of the artists to unlock it and go through and explain things to them. I don't think that this ever was fully implemented with the artists, especially as, as the program went along. It would have to be enforced. Pretty much, I, I think that the, that the best, best usage of it would be trying reinstill the, the artist in residence program. With, with the museum still in there and whether the, the spaces would be reallocated in some way or not, I don't know.
Yeah, going back to what you said when it was given to the city, I know there was a lot of hubbub about that. Because it was given without any funding to support it. It's kind of like a, a grant that goes away, you know, you get it for a year, then what do you do? So we didn't get any, any money for maintenance or anything like that. And of course, the, the city is not in the museum business, you know? And, at least that's just my opinion, that, that's not really something that a, that a city would be in the business of.
Historical Commission Conference, I inquired about ways that the city could help, um, navigate through the cost of the Horlock House and some best case scenarios. Phoenix Restoration is the best in the business FYI. They are award-winning, amazing. And, and they do everything according to the Historical Commission standards so that you can qualify for state funding and federal funding when it comes to historical buildings. So as a city, of course, we don't, um, we can't really benefit from tax credits because we're a government entity. But there is a loophole in that. And, um, I pulled it up so that I could quote it properly. Buildings owned by government, government entities, and this is for the historical tax credit. And you have the ability to apply for the state and the federal. And once you're approved for one, you're automatically approved for both. One is a twenty percent credit and one is a twenty-five percent credit. And as it, that percentage across, they're stacked. So that you have a possibility of, of that much in a credit that can be banked and sold. So a bank can, can do that. And buildings owned by governmental entities may not be eligible for this state and federal tax credit program if the building is operated by a long-term leasee that is eligible. So public-private partnerships may be eligible depending on how they are incorporated. So a city's EDC or a governmental entity can do a long-term lease with a nonprofit entity that would qualify for it. And then at that point, those tax credits become available and they are bankable. And they can be sold and you have to talk to a tax person to completely understand the, like, the implications of that. But it is my understanding that it saves a ton of money and that there are investors that are willing to do that kind of investing because they, they're buying your credit is basically what they're doing. Because they get the money back at the end. So they fund the project and then they get the money back at the end from the state and federal. So if we partnered with the Historical Commission here locally, the Two Rivers, if we managed to do a partnership with the Horlock House because we wanted to get it completely renovated, then it, they have things that would help pay for that with a long-term agreement and things such as that. And then, of course, there would be some limitations on what could be done. It would have to be, um, operated as a museum or an art center or a cultural center. There are things that they would require, that the state would require for five years. And after that five years, it could go into something else. Of course, we have a deed restriction on the property itself. And they actually go hand in hand if you look at the deed restriction and you look at the restriction from the state and federal level. But that funding and everything, and there's also grants and stuff like that available through that same program that, um, I know Phoenix Restoration is very familiar with and, and how to manage that project so that it qualifies one hundred percent for all of that. So, that's all I know. I wanted y'all to know that. There's money out there, it can be done, if that's what y'all want to do.
I also wonder about just the location, you know, being totally surrounded by residential. How, you know?
Well, that's other part of the deed restriction is it cannot be used as a residence. It can be used for the, uh, the innkeeper's upkeep. So if you, for instance, as I gave the, the example was if you, it was a bed and breakfast, the person could stay there that upkeeps the bed and breakfast, oversees the bed and breakfast. But it cannot be used as a residence.
We have the additional problem, at one time, we, we're putting in a parking lot out in the backyard. And one of the, uh, artists in residence got out there where they were starting to dig up for that and found some, some arrowheads or something, some, some relics. And the people from the Texas Historical Commission found out about it and put a hold on us. So, I, I don't know where you'd put the parking lot to solve the parking problem.
One of the things we talked about at Public Works is, is not, not, just going in and just put asphalt, just put asphalt down. You're not going to dig and put a parking lot, you just take the saw in there and put it down on top of the grass now. That way, you're not digging up anything.
I'm, I'm concerned because I hear the, the good people from the restoration business. And they're in, the reason I asked the question about what we got with it was they're in the restoration business, they're not in the construction business, they're in the restoration business. And that's to, to make it as near, I guess, as, as near as possible to what it originally was. And it's been a long time since it was what it originally was. I don't, I don't know if we need what they're selling. I don't know that we need, they, they didn't do a, an exhaustive study type thing. They're, as you said, they're talking about their experience with these things. Depending on the usage we have for it, uh, it would be terrible to spend all this money and, and have this relatively completely restored house and not have anything to do with it. So, we pretty much have to decide what we're going to do with it before we decide what we're going to spend on it.
Yeah, and unfortunately, things like artist in residency, you don't, we don't know, I mean, if we, how long it would last again. Because they're the same, the, the, it, they, they've changed directors at the Arts Council again, like twice since we began. I don't think they've hired a new one yet. Have they?
Uh, Jason, um, have our, uh, building inspector toured the place?
Uh, we've not asked our building inspector to look at it, no sir.
So he hadn't made any kind of suggestions and any?
No sir, no, I, I don't even know if Nick has a lot of history on historical. Yeah, yeah, so, no, we, we've not looked at that, no sir.
Uh, you know, I wouldn't be, be inquiring about historical, I would just be inquiring about the building except the safety of the building.
Structural.
So, staff has, staff has walked it with even having, not even having building. There, there is some safety issues. Uh, uh, it is not ADA compliant. I would not even try to put a wheelchair up the back ramp. It's, there's a lot of morgues that are robbed.
About went through it one day.
So it, it's, they're, it, it, it's needing a lot of love.
Do we have any groups that's interested in it?
So, again, um, the only, only, only group that has shown significant interest is the Chamber. Um, and again, that came with, what we're going to do with parking, what are you going to do for upkeep? Uh, and, and they understand that, that, uh, I'm not going to speak so much for Lucy, but, but, uh, but they, they, they understand, they need a little bite into it too, so they're willing to put some money into it as well. Uh, but just trying to understand what that's going to look like for a long term. Um, I, I do know, you, you, you all read the, the survey. Uh, there is, you know, there's desire for, uh, for, for it to be some type of museum. Um, I'm not disagreeing with that, but I also want to remind Council, who's going to run it? And so ideally, that's going to have to be some volunteer. We don't have staff that, that can be at that location. Um, you know, we talked about a Main Street manager coming onboard at some point. That's not part of Main Street, so it's not, that's not a, a perfect location for that person. That person needs to be close to, um, the constituents that they're representing, which is downtown. Um, and, and so, don't really have anybody else that, that's shown any interest in wanting to occupy the building.
And that, the, um, the agreement could be with the Chamber as well.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, uh, definitely. That was one of the ones we looked at because it's a nonprofit five oh one.
Right, they would be qualified.
They're a five oh one C something, it's a different C three, but they're a C.
We're a C six, but we did vote to establish a C.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
And the city has a foundation as well that could be used for the grant process for any other.
So, so, just so you'll know, the,
Not for the taxing.
Yeah. So one of the, that he was talking about, um, he was talking about the seventy-five percent for engineering, architectural. So, that's that, if you're on that page two, that's around, that's at, right at two hundred thousand. So you're talking about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, that you would need right off the bat to start putting together some type of plan, uh, for it. We, we could reach back out to him and have him, as Councilmember Foltz said, look at prioritizing some of the items. But you got to remember, like what he said, when you start adjusting the foundation, now your doors won't shut, your windows won't shut. So now you got to put new windows, it needs, well, you know it needs a new roof. Uh, you, you might not have to do the paint on the outside. But if, I mean, again, the cosmetic stuff is what you, what he was talking about, you might not need to do.
Before we reach back out to him, uh, you know, I'm getting kind of mixed emotion, uh, from the last workshop and, and then this workshop. Seemed like sometimes the council want to go forward, then it, others, the council don't want to go forward and just want to stand still. So I think that we really need to come to a consensus of, do we want to move forward? Or do we want to turn it over to someone else and, and let them work with it? Uh, because I know this guy's not doing this free.
Yeah, so this was, there was a small fee for us to, to pay for, to get all this done. It wasn't that much. Uh, but the, the big piece is that hundred and fifty thousand to be able to actually come up with a design and engineering and determine exactly what needs to be. Um, as he said, these were costs, these are just estimates based on his experience. Project would need to be bid out, um, but I agree. I, I do think what staff needs to hear from Council is, is, um, do you want us to work directly with another entity or something like the Chamber? And if so, then we can sit down with the Chamber and figure out what that's going to be and try to come up with a plan and come back to Council.
You said that the Chamber of Commerce is the only one to have shown interest in the building as of now?
That's the only, that, I mean, unless, I'm looking at staff, I don't think anybody from staff's heard anything else, any other entity. Uh, unless there's somebody in the audience that represents the entity that would be interested. I would love to hear from them too. But right now, um, uh, I, I've spoken to, to Lucy and Lucy's spoken to her board, and so.
What, what does that, what does interest mean? What are, what are you saying when you say interest? I mean, if you want to buy the building, do you want us to give it to you? We can't, I don't know if we can.
Lucy, do you mind if you're communicating?
So I, so I'm not going to, again, I'll speak for a little bit of Lucy because Lucy and I did have some conversation. The idea was, is, um,
Partnership.
Is a partnership where maybe it's, maybe it's, um, we can fund maintenance for historical buildings. And so this could be, we could fund a portion of it each year. But also, if the Chamber's located that, they have to have responsibility because it's their new home too. So they would have responsibility for the daily maintenance of it. And putting aside some funds for any capital items as well. But I think, and again, it would be a partnership. Now, um, maybe it's, maybe it's, you know, ten dollars a, um, a year, whatever it's, whatever Council decides they want to do. Uh, but allow the Chamber to maintain it because they're going to be in it day in and day out. And we've heard from Council, uh, understanding and from others, the way for a historical building, you've got to have somebody in there. Someone's got to be in there. And that would be for them.
But does the Chamber want to be in the museum business in addition to being the Chamber home?
It depends. So as a Chamber, we have explored, um, establishing tourism and marketing for the county as a whole. I think it is a gap that we have in our services currently. We do offer economic development for the county, but we don't, we don't focus strongly on tourism. We do some as a whole. I, I think this is something that we could get into, yes. Um, it would take a little bit more exploration, it'd take some discussion with my board because it would mean establishing a whole new avenue of services that we don't currently offer, um, with two staff members. Now, we are working on, uh, we were awarded a Echo Dev intern and we are working on another internship grant that, um, I, I firmly believe we will get. That'll be an ongoing awardship for us every year. So that will help with some tourism and marketing, so it won't cost our members, because that's the big thing. We're a C six, so that means you pay to be in our club, so to speak. So that means it costs our members more every time we up our services or add services. So I'm always looking at grants or different ways to, uh, find a way to do it at no cost. So we do want to get into this business, but it would depend on how much cost there is, how much work it's going to be on the current staff. And, uh, Councilmember Foltz, when it comes to, uh, the interest and what we want to do as a Chamber, we're always interested in doing things bigger and better for our community. The, a bigger building allows us to do more and do a more diversified service than what we're at now. However, it does mean that we have to look at, can we afford it with our current budget? Can we do it within our current realms and constraints that we have? So we are considering that as well.
And you said that maintenance piece, could, in addition to that, could there be hot funds used?
So that's what I'm saying, so hot funds, hot funds could be used for, uh, uh, maintenance and, and upkeep of historical preservation. And that would be part of it. But also, that would be part, instead of the Chamber paying a lease or a rental, a monthly rental, would be X amount you need to put back into the building. Um, and they, they would just do that directly, so that it would lessen that amount. Uh, but upfront, we have to figure out, we'd also have to figure out how we're going to pay for the two million dollars worth of.
Well, it's already been, there's already been money put out for, I don't know how many years annually for maintenance out of the city's coffers, right?
Correct, but I, I would say the reason we're in the shape we are now is it's not.
We didn't spend enough.
Right, yeah.
But it's not like it was just sitting there running away.
And, and I, and we can get with legal counsel to see what we can, um, because I don't think there's an actual cap on that. So we could, I mean, we don't have two million dollars in fund balance. I mean, I think we got about five hundred thousand in fund balance. Um, so we could pull down some of the fund balance to, to do this. Um, you know, ideally, you would try to look at issuing some debt, um, along with grants. A mixture of a little bit of everything, um, and figure out how to, there, there's way to stagger it, but you're not going to pay cash, two hundred, two, two million dollars upfront. There's just not a way to do that. But i- if you're okay with, with, if, if.
I don't, I don't buy the package. I, I think that, that I look at individual items or, and I, and granted, his, he talks about how they're just dealing on their experience and not really a good engineering cost, cost estimate on what these things do. They say, replace the roof, forty-five thousand dollars. Can we get Schulte or somebody to come and look at the roof and say, how much were you doing for?
Correct, we.
How, how close are we?
But I'm going to, I'm going to defer to, to Councilmember Peterson because she's been to a lot of the historical, uh, meetings and, and can explain a little bit of.
If you're wanting to qualify for any of the historical grants or any of the tax credits or any of the funding that the state has available for historical buildings, then it has to be done to their standards. And it has to be through their approved contractors. The issue with that is, is that if it is not done to those standards, then you will not get any funding from the state whatsoever. And you can, they, they can pull your, your, um, your plaque, your marker for not maintaining the property as historical property.
Might be okay.
Well, I know it's. Well, no, it's not, because there's a deed restriction on it that says it has to be maintained that way. So that has to be maintained that way. So there's a set of standards that are required through the Historical Commission and the federal, not just the state. Those standards have to be met in order for that property to be what it's supposed to be. If you follow those standards, there is funding available for that. They will help you. They understand that it's a costly process. Because they don't, it's not run-of-the-mill anything. There's nothing run-of-the-mill on the house. The windows aren't run-of-the-mill. The roof isn't run-of-the-mill. The shingles aren't run-of-the-mill. Nothing on it is run-of-the-mill. So everything is specialty, and all of those things cost more, obviously.
Councilmembers.
And that's why they make concessions, but there's money available to help.
Probably ultimately why Mr. Horlock gave it away.
I will also say, this, this that he gave us is not an itemized... This is based, just to give us an idea of how much it's going to cost.
It could be, it could be more. It could be $2 million more.
It's probably inflated.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be such an ad hoc thing. It would be more detailed once we've agreed that that's what we're going to do. And then, at that point, he would tell you, the shingles cost this much, the labor costs this much, this is what costs this, this is what costs this, and then it would be more precise.
And might I add, so when we went through, I was on the courthouse project when we completely redid the courthouse. And that was from the cupola all the way down to the retainer wall that encompasses the entire courthouse in the Grimes County, in Anderson, the county seat. Might I ask, that, that project was extremely intensive. So we got in there, I mean, we replicated down to the hinges, down to the window locks. The biggest thing was, we found out that in some instances, the project was a little inflated. And in some instances, we were able to find workarounds. So sometimes, that $2 million may end up being close to a million. It may end up being less than that. And we also asked the groups when I worked on that project, and that was a very big project. But when we worked on that project, we asked them to prioritize what needed to be done first, which of course was the windows, the walls, the water damage, the roof. So of course, we prioritized that, and then we worked through it, and THC was very, very beneficial with us on that. They worked through the problems that we had. We found different programs that came available years into the project. So this is not going to be something that you do in 12 months. This is something that you're doing over the next two to potentially five years. You work through the projects, you work through the programs, and then you work through the grants as they come available. THC, Phoenix One, we worked with Acton out of Austin, which is a very good group. And actually, they did some of the work, they lent a hand with Mr. Martenson and his project over here when they demoed that building. Those contractors work with us on multiple projects throughout the county and understand that there are some things that are constraint issues, so we have to prioritize where they are. And then I will tell you this, that sometimes we look at this and go, oh, well, these windows need to be replaced. They don't actually need to be replaced. They just need to be repaired. So that's where you bring in someone that says, hey, I don't have skin in the game. You don't actually have to pay $5,000 for windows. We came across this multiple times in the courthouse. And I will tell you, those meetings were both tear-joking and joyful. You've got a good mixture there. So you just have to kind of know what you have to work with and where you can wiggle. So again, $2 million, don't get sticker shock. Understand that the courthouse was a very big project, and there were some things that we worked around and didn't actually do, and it still fell within the THC guidelines, and we were still able to get the grants that we needed.
Okay, question, Lucy.
Yes, sir.
The Grimes County Chamber of Commerce is Grimes County, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have you visited with Commissioner's Court or the county judge on if the Chamber decides to go this direction, would the county hip hop?
So we've explored options of increasing, so currently, the grant that we're given from the county is at $20,000. We have explored options of asking for an increase in that. Now, ideally, it cannot, I can't walk in and ask for $2 million. That's not how it's going to work, guys. I applaud you for thinking that way. I know, I could ask. I could smile really pretty, but it's not going to work. They don't really like me so much. We have had the discussion, so it is budget season now. We are in discussions of upping our grant. It's not going to be much. But they have said that depending on what we need, it all goes back to services for the county. So they want to see more services for the county and not tied to one municipality or another. And that's just their answer. Has it been on Commissioner's Court docket? No, it has not been on an actual court discussion, just me talking to each one of the five member court. All of them agree that eventually, we are going to have to up our grant. I did not itemize and say, hey, for the Horlock House in its own package. I just said, hey, for additional services, changes in what we do, changes in location. So in a nutshell, they haven't said yes. That's your answer. But they didn't say no either, and I take that as a yes, kind of, in my world.
I was just thinking, since this Grimes County, that, you know, just, instead of just the city of Navasota, the county need to bear some of the burden.
I agree with you. I think the ask can be formally made. I just think we need to have an idea of what the city wants to do, since technically, the property is deeded to you guys as a whole. So we, as a Chamber, aside from just loose discussions, we have not really done anything formal yet. And we're happy to do that formally. Now is the time to do that, since it is budget season with them. We just have to ask them what they're capable of, and then give them a proper dialogue and what we're looking at, and an actual layout of what we want to do.
I know, I just speak for myself up here, but everybody's got a voice. If the Chamber is the only one that have showed interest in it, I mean, just get... My suggestion would be, let's get with the Chamber and move forward on it and see what we can work out.
I like that.
Yeah, and then, based on the county situation, there are other counties in the state that have county museums.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know how that is all done, you know, or anything. Obviously, there's a budget for it from the county. And basically, our best museum is acted as the county museum, because there is no other one. So I don't know, that's just something to kind of have in the loop.
So what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, so I will work with Lucy in the Chamber about working on something, as well as taking that first step about trying to get some, I guess, requests for qualifications for architectural and engineering services, because those would have to come back to you for approval. Again, paying for that out of the hot funds will able to do that. So this will be coming back to you, if you're okay with it. I just need to get kind of direction of what you, everybody's pointing me the right direction.
Before we spend any more money, won't we see...
So we're not going to spend any more, I'm going to, what I'm going to do is ask for a request for qualifications. So we would ask for architectures and engineerings to provide us information, and then we decide. And then, here we go with, they will get us those price quotes for those services, those fees. But based on what he's saying here, 75% of that upfront of the 200 will be about 150, based on his cost estimate. It might be more, it might be less, but you would, before we spend any money, Council, you will have that discussion before you.
I hate to suggest forming a committee. But I think with what we've heard here, that we need to take the people who have had some experience in the work up in Anderson and everything, and form a committee. And I think there's a leader for the committee.
And with that note...
We need one more committee, right?
Yeah, yeah, we're practically at the Baptist around here.
So we can, we can bring it back at the next council meeting for the mayor to appoint two members of council, unless you want to wait till May, after May.
Yeah, we can wait till August.
But I will, we'll start working with Lucy and trying to get something together. Okay?
And then maybe get the, from the Phoenix.
Right.
We'll get, because like what Josh was saying earlier, maybe have some kind of a, like a...
Priorization, yeah.
Yeah, and also, it would be like the minimal for it to be operable and safe.
Okay.
I have another question.
We're breaking down in phases.
Yeah.
Phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four. The Chamber and you, have you toured the house?
Yes, sir. That's all the way from top to bottom, and I've even been under the house.
And you feel like that y'all can make that work?
Yes, sir. Yes, depending, yes. I never commit 100%. No, yes, I think we can make it work. I think some things are going to have to change with how we work, and again, services and what we do will change. But that would come with being in a different location, being in somewhere bigger. But yes, sir, I think we can, as long as it's a good partnership with the county and the city.
Good. All good.
Okay.
Thank you.